You're good.
Thank you. At this time, the board would join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
You know, I felt like I was in the choir. You threw me off of that mask when you were saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I was thinking, somebody's off-key. Anyway, before we get started tonight, the reason for this meeting is, I think it's pretty important that we're fortunate to have the Health Department Director Susan Hayes with us, join us tonight. And she's going to share some information, just where we are in Randolph County with COVID cases and what's going on, some of her thoughts. And I think it's important that we hear straight from the person that has the facts. And after her, I'm going to ask Dr. Gany to share some important numbers. And we'll discuss things that's going on in our school system that many of you probably don't know quite all the facts. And I think it's important that we're as transparent as we can on some things. And I also want you to know that we also realize how important it is that kids need to be back in school. You know, we were the first system to go out and we started kids in school. And I'm proud of that. We've done a great job. And I'm sure it's been a battle and a lot of staff members, teachers, principals, our central office staff, they've worked really hard and done a great job. And it's been a heavy burden on a lot of teachers, learning the new system, learning new things that they probably never thought they would have to deal with. And parents trying to teach their kids at home, that's not a real good situation with parents either. I know a lot of struggles there. It's a tough situation. It's hard on the parents, it's hard on the staff. And I was thinking today that teachers, you're essential workers. Nurses, they're there every, and it's tough. But teachers, I get it through this, you really are, how important your job and what you do to kids, for kids, you're essential workers. It's essential as you can get in the life of a kid. So anyway, we're going to talk about this tonight and hopefully clear some things up and try to make some decisions that what's best for kids and keep teachers in mind. And let's just see where we're headed tonight. But first of all, thank you, Ms. and Todd Cutler has joined us. Ms. Hayes, we'd like to thank you for taking the time out to be here tonight. And I know not another person already in this county has worked any harder than you. And appreciate all the hard work and you've been a great help to the school system and helped Dr. Gany to keep us in school. And at this time, I'll just turn it over to you and let you just share some comments on where you think we are, maybe where we're headed, and just give us an insight. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, at this time, let me, I need a motion to adopt this gentleman.
Senator.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, state your name and say aye.
President Walz, aye.
Brian Biggs, aye.
Kiki Cook, aye.
Chair Farlow, aye.
Fred Burgess, aye.
I'm Kevin Ryan.
Okay, sorry about that. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Chairman Cook. Dr. Gany, do they have a copy of the information I gave you?
No. I just printed it before I came in.
Yeah, that's fine. It's not a problem. I just didn't know how much detail I needed to be.
No, I just, I just printed it before I came in.
Yeah, no problem. So today Randolph County has 3,351 confirmed cases. We have 57 deaths. Three of those were last week. One is, we have an additional death that is probable. We don't have the death certificate on hand. We're seeing a surge across the nation in coronavirus cases. We're seeing a surge across North Carolina. And we're seeing a surge in Randolph County. Last Friday, we had the highest number of positive cases in any given day that we've had since March. Today, we had even higher number of cases. Our percent positive, and that means the proportion of positive cases for the number of tests that are done, is 8.2 right now. The state's and the CDC's goal is less than five. We were less than five two weeks ago. We're now at 8.2. When you look at guidance by CDC in terms of how schools can judge, you know, using metrics to determine what the risk of transmission in schools is, we are probably at moderate risk right now, moderate to high risk. And I say that because the CDC says that if you have 20 to less than 50 cases per 100,000 population, that puts you at moderate risk. We have 23 cases per 100,000. It also says that if you have a percent positive for tests performed in the last 14 days of eight to less than 10%, that puts you at higher risk. And we're at 8.2%. So we're somewhere in between moderate and high risk right now for transmission in schools. We are seeing community spread. It is not in any one population. It's not in any one area in terms of business or schools or churches or anything like that. It is widespread. There are hotspots across the county. Those hotspots are in the Randleman area. The Archdale Trinity area is a big hotspot. The southwest, southeast, all of those areas. The southwest, southeast, all of those areas in Randolph County are considered hotspots right now. I looked at, we took the zip codes from all the positive cases we've received in the last two weeks and plotted those on a map in GIS. And that, that is how we know where the hotspots are. And that's something we do periodically here in the EOC to kind of gauge where we are. And so we are seeing community spread. We're seeing hotspots across the county. You know, we all know that children are less likely to spread coronavirus than adults. They are typically have mild to moderate symptoms. When you look at the number of cases that we've had, we've had far more adults than we've had children. And you know, that, that in and of itself is, is a positive thing. But if you ask me if we're in a situation right now where our cases are increasing, I would tell you yes. And, and we are in a higher risk situation now, as are a number of other counties across North Carolina and another number of other states, if you, if you watch the news. So I'm happy to clarify or answer any questions, if you have any, just let me know.
I do have one, and well, I'm sure you have questions, but if I understood you correctly, like two, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we were in the right range. Basically, our last board meeting was like three weeks ago. That would have been like the 5% and now we're up to 8.2.
Having a little trouble hearing you. So your question, I think, is you want a clarification that two weeks ago, we were at the right spot. We were below 5% and yes, we were.
And today, I know Friday, I was following the numbers and I think it was like Saturday, maybe 60 in one day. Are we that many today?
We, when we came in here Monday morning, we had 74 positive cases. Today, we had 67 alone. So today is our highest day so far.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up. I thought that's what you said. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions?
Ms. Hayes, I've got a couple of questions. Brian Biggs, just a couple here. I'll try to be real quick, maybe four, might take four or five minutes. Just for our students and our teachers, where they can have a good understanding about this. Can you give us, and I hope you have this information, transfers from cases, because that's what they're interested in. You know, teachers are worried that students are going to transfer it to them, parents are worried whether or not students are transferring to each other. And my, my question is, now it's like a three-part question. What is the number of cases that has transferred from a student to a teacher in Randolph County?
I can't tell you that because I, I don't know. I would not know where people got.
I know, but we're tracking this stuff down. That would be very vital. If we knew, like if it's, because you know, I see like the, the thing, my question I'm getting to is, have, have we had like a school that, because I don't know of it. I'm just asking you, I don't know. Where a student has come to school and/or a teacher has infected multiple people?
No, not that I know of. And here's why I say that.
Okay.
Have we had students in school with cases? Yes. Have we had teachers in the school that were positive? Absolutely.
Okay.
But we've not had a cluster. And the reason I know that is because when we go back and do the, when Dr. Gany and I look at these cases and their staff and our staff start talking to folks about who, where you've been, where you, who you've been around. A cluster is only a cluster if you can epidemiologically link the case in time and place
Yes.
to another case. And we have not been able to do that.
Well, that, that was my understanding. I just wanted that clarification, because I know that people are uneasy, but then I know you guys are doing tracing, you're doing a great job. But that was my understanding, is we have not had a person come to school, teacher or student, to spread it to other folks. So okay, well, that's great. Another thing that I was looking at today, and you know, I know you're with the CDC and different things. There've been a lot of surveys coming out now. They took one the other day, you're probably aware of, with 5,412 people. And they, the thing that we're up against right now is, and I know that COVID is real, it is real. But today, we brought you here and we're trying to decide whether or not to send students back to school. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get the knowledge from you. But the, the surveys that come out, and I was just going through them, and I tell you, after, after you go through these surveys, the first thing I did is call my wife yesterday. And I said, have we told our kids we live up? Because with these surveys going on, this is from the U.S. Centers of Disease Control. They said, they took a group of students, and they, 5,412 students. And they had astounding results. One in four had considered suicide this year. One in four. You're aware of this. And I'm sitting there, and that's why I told my wife, I called her up right then, I said, and I'm being serious, I said, we need to make sure our kids know we live up, that we're here for. And, and, and my, my thing is, is I know what we're here to do today, and we're struggling, but these kids. And then it went on, and they had, I'm sure you know of this case also, they said, since the start of the year, since the COVID, there's been 200,000 unreported child abuse cases. They said, because most of those cases are seen in schools and teachers, they see it, they call it out. And there's a lot of, I'm not putting this to you, I'm spitting some facts out here, but there's a lot of unforeseen things. One in four is contemplating suicide. That's not my numbers, that's CDC numbers. That's, that's real. That's scary. They're home, some people are getting abused, they're contemplating suicide. There, there's a lot of stuff going on. And you know, that's, that's just my question. And I appreciate that, because I'm very concerned with the spread of the COVID. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Ms. Hayes, Trace Volz, you said Randolph County had over 3,000 cases. How many active cases do we have going on now?
How many active? We have over 300 active?
Okay, I mean, that's one, one thing, when people say it's 3,000, excuse the numbers to, you know, people. And also, you know, we said we had 60-some reported cases on Monday. Is there any backlog on us getting those numbers? Because I know my daughter, she got tested the week before last, she got tested on Monday, and it's supposed to be next day. It was Thursday when she got her results, five o'clock. So is there any way that these numbers are stacking up on one certain day?
Well, you know, it just depends on when, when the labs come in. I mean, you know, it's, we're using technology. And if you use technology, you know how that goes. We are at the mercy of when laboratories and providers report to us those positive cases.
Right.
Typically, we get them the next day, but that's not always the case.
And that's why, that's why I'm thinking, I think sometimes these numbers are skewed somewhat, because I've looked at the state's numbers. I see where they had to go back and actually change their numbers, because they, one day it'd be a great big number, and then two weeks later, they go back and reduce that number. Because you know, it's not.
Clarify something, clarify something for me. When you say numbers are skewed, what do you mean?
I mean, you know, say, you know, we got.
Piling up on one.
Yeah, they're piling up on each other. Say, we got 70 cases today, but actually, the cases didn't come in today, they came in two days ago. So you know, the numbers are piled all up on one certain day. They're not.
Sometimes, but there is a 14-day, you know, incubation period. So if it's three days ago and we, that they got tested and we get the test today, we still have, you know, a few more days to go before people that are in contact with that person could develop a case. So yeah, it is a delay, and I understand for you all, when you get the reports from Dr. Gany, each day, there may be a difference in numbers. But overall, the numbers are not really skewed. We're looking at a 14-day window, because you could have an exposure today and not have symptoms until day 14.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hayes, this is Todd Cutler. On that 8.2% the last 14 days, how many, what was, what would you say the percent was for ages 19 and under for that, within that 8.2%?
Now, I don't see, hang on, I might kind of give you an idea. Do y'all get our situational report that we send out every week?
I do.
Okay, that is usually in that report, just so you know. So hold on, let me look at my data. So our Z range is 17 age range, and I'm just looking at the, looking at the graph. It's probably around, out of the cases that were reported between September 26th and October 3rd, there's probably around 25, maybe 35 out of, well, on, on, on October 3rd, let me do it that way. On October 3rd, 2020, out of 120 cases, probably 30 of them or 35 of them were ages zero to 17.
But out of those, we don't know, this is Chair Farley, out of those, we don't know those, of those children, how many were in school?
No, I don't, we don't collect that kind of data. We don't have that capability.
Have we, have we operated a school in, within a 14-day period at 8.2% this school year? Or this high?
Uh, right now.
Yeah, just right now, but, but since August 17th, it's never been this high?
Um, since August 17th, our percent positive case on August, the seven days between eight, nine, and eight fifteen, our percent positive was 5.5%. The highest it got in that whole point in time was September 6th to September 12th, and that was at 6.4%. And no, we haven't.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had. Gary.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Do you have any questions, Sharon, Chris?
The last time we were at 8% was the end of July.
That's what, yeah.
No school.
Dr. Gany, do we know the percentage for the kids who are in school now versus the cases we have? What percentage is that?
I'm going to share something out with you here in just a minute. I want to address some stuff.
I mean, we're sitting here talking about 8%, but you know.
I'm going to share, I'm going to share with you the impact on our school system in just a second. To say exactly, I'm trying my best to answer that, hopefully.
So I guess at this time, we're finished. She want to stay with us?
Yes, real quick. Ms. Hayes, this is Fred Burgess. How does that 8% compare to neighboring counties?
I'll take yours.
Ms. Hayes, how does the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to hear that.
Okay. How does the 8.2% in Randolph County compare to neighboring counties?
To neighboring counties? It's about the same. Like I said, now, without pulling those neighboring counties, their data dashboards up, I couldn't tell you. But the last time I looked at it, and, and we have a conference call every Tuesday with Department of Public Health and North Carolina Division of Health and Human Services. Our understanding is this is pretty typical. It is higher in some counties, but not in counties here. Mostly in counties up near the northeast and the sand hills. But counties in the central, central part of North Carolina are very similar in number, in case numbers. I looked at Davidson County yesterday. They have about the same number of cases we do. In terms of proportion of cases, Gilford County has about what we do, as does Alman's County. I do know that North Carolin, that the central portion of North Carolina is second in hospitalizations right now. And I know that our hospital was full right now, and, and they are having trouble moving patients from Randolph to Greensboro to Green Tech Poly Sewer, the COVID hospital in, in Gilford County. So I think we're very comparable, but without looking at their data, I can't tell you if they're exactly like 8%. But they're very close, I'm sure, because their number of cases, and I, when I looked yesterday, were very, very similar for those three counties, Davidson, Gilford, and. Now, Gilford has more counties, but, I mean, more cases, but their proportion of cases is similar to ours, as is Alman's.
You know, someone was telling me today that hospitalization is probably at the peak as high as it's been. Is that correct? That's what I understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Hayes, one more thing, and I appreciate you answering these questions. You've been great. Gilford County, you test on that real quick, because they're fully remote. Do you know the number of, I guess, zero to 19-year-olds? Do you have that statistic by any chance? Are we very, I mean, so that's the statistic we're using for our students? They're the same as we are?
If Gilford County is the same.
Yeah, they on the same exact level as us, as far as cases for students?
I don't know. I'm sorry. I, I know Randolph County much better than I do Gilford.
I understand, I understand. I appreciate it. And thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Okay, we certainly appreciate you taking the time. And I thought it was important that the public firsthand, I mean, you hear rumors and people tell all kinds of stories, but it's nice to hear from a person that has the facts. And also, I want to thank you once again for not turning your phone off when Dr. Gany's calling you. Because it seems like every day I talk to him, well, Susan Hayes, Susan Hayes, I talk to her. I mean, you've been a great partner. I mean, I mean, you guys have been chasing, I mean, I can't imagine the workload you have on you. And we're just part of the workload. I mean, and she is a tiger. Especially being a tiger, it's a great day to be a tiger. Great day to take a day off, but you don't get any of those. But anyway, thank you very much. And we just thought it was important, as we make decisions tonight, that we hear from her and know the facts. And one thing that I'm going to ask you, the last question, you hear this all the time, and, and I was guilty of this. Two months ago, three months ago, I was probably one of those naysayers that said, you know what? Either this may go away election time, or it's no more than the flu. I used to kind of believe that, you know, when it, early on. But as times went on, and I actually know people that's had it and people with underlying conditions and how it affected them, and some that's died, I get it. It's not like, it's not like the flu, and it's not going away, is it?
No, as much as I want it to go away, and I do, because I am so tired of, you know, we've been in this emergency operations center since March. I haven't been in my office at all. And I've got a very small staff, and we are, we are worn out. So yes, I wish it would go away, but I really honestly don't think we're going to see a break in, in numbers and cases until we get a vaccine. And I don't see that being widely available before summer of next year, to tell you the truth. So I think it's with us for a while. And I have, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say a couple of things. One thing is, y'all better be good to Dr. Gany, because if you're not, I'm going to hire you. One thing is, y'all better be good to Dr. Gany, because if you're not, I'm gonna hire him, because he can flat out do, he can flat out do some good public health work. Um, and the other thing I want to say is, I only, you know, we only have a few tools right now to prevent the spread of the coronavirus, and and really and truly, what we're trying to do is slow it down, so that people, um, have a chance to wait for the vaccine, so that we can keep people out of the hospitals, so that the hospitals are not overwhelmed, and so that we can prevent deaths. We have a nurse who works for us, and her husband and his, his dad were the first two deaths that we had, I'll take that back, they were probably the second and third death that we had in Randolph County out of one family. Um, so it is real. Please wear a mask, that is the best tool you have right now. We know they work. Um, even the gaiters that you pull up, if you'll double-layer them, they're pretty darn good. Um, so, you know, again, it has been a pleasure to work with Dr. Gany and his staff. We've had an extremely good working relationship for a long time, and I expect it to stay that way for a long time. So, um, I really appreciate you inviting me to come, it's been, it's been an honor for you to have me here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we heard from one expert, okay, now we're gonna, I guess her partner in this, but I asked Dr. Gany, you know, a lot of people, uh, throughout the parents, staff members, um, you know, the last question, well, I didn't know this, I didn't know that, um, why hadn't we heard this, and there's a lot of information you're not allowed to give out, but I asked Dr. Gany tonight, would he share the information, numbers that he could share, where the public would know, you know, every, you know, people just kind of know where we stand, and, um, you know, later on, I kind of make, pin him down to get his opinion, but right now, um, and I still say this, you know what, Dr. Gany has told me, you let me tell you why he's working so hard, and he's probably bothering Susan, I mean, keeping her awake at night, but he wants to keep kids in school, he wants our kids in school, because just like us, we understand, and you're right, Ryan, this affecting a lot of things out there when they're not in school, and we have no clue what's going on, because teachers, we were, you know, you were their parents, you were their doctor, nurse, you were you were their safe haven, you're a lot of different things to the kids, you probably don't even realize. So anyway, you know what, yes, we want them back in school, we want safety, but we, we're just, I guess we need to hear from you.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the board, uh, because this is a very important meeting, and we couldn't wait it till Monday night, our regular scheduled meeting, but this board didn't think we needed to wait till Monday night, and that, to me, is, is leadership in itself, so I hope we can share some information tonight that we, that I have, and, um, help clear up some questions, and maybe we, uh, can use that to make decisions moving forward. So, uh, without a doubt, the eight, last eight and a half weeks have been exciting. Uh, seeing kids back in school has been exciting, but there is some important information that's developed over time since August 17 that I need to share with you, and make sure we're all where we need to be if we make decisions, especially with uh, October 19th coming, which was the original date we had set to bring back students in pre-K through grades five every day a week. So I want to start and explain a couple of things, and, and how things have been looked at for the last eight weeks. Without a doubt, the number of positive cases affecting the schools, and the number of, of, not affecting the schools, excuse me, and the number of positive cases that have been exposures that have affected schools have increased. So we've got two types of positive cases in the schools. We have the ones that don't affect the school, and I'll explain why they don't, and then we have the ones that are exposure cases that do affect the schools. But you know, we all knew that was gonna happen when we decided to start school on August 17. We wanted to be perfect, we didn't want any of this in our schools, but we knew cases would develop. And why should we have expected anything different than what's going on in the community around us? The cases are happening in the community around us, we're upset in the community. So, there are four cases that we dealt with in the past eight and a half weeks, four types of cases. There's been the positive student that did not affect the school. There's been the positive staff member that does not affect the school. There's been a positive student that does affect the school, and there's been a positive staff member that does affect the school. Want to get a little deeper into this. When does a positive student case or a positive staff case not affect the school? And I want to stop right here and say this, a case is a positive, identified positive person, whether a student has been identified as being positive with COVID, or a staff member, that is what I call the case. So when does a positive student case or a positive staff case not affect a school? There's two types, two situations. The person had symptoms of COVID, and we did not have them on campus within a window of time prescribed by DHHS and CDC prior to the symptoms starting. Uh, Ms. Hayes, would you say what, what that window of time is about, 48, we're looking at about 48 hours, right? From the CDC, DHHS. So you can have a child who has symptoms, they turn up positive, we go to look for the date their symptoms started, and we look forward to see when they were on campus, or they're on campus during that window of time. If not, then that child's positive case did not affect the school. Same thing, say a child had, or a child or a staff member turned up positive, and they did not have symptoms. There are people turning up positive that don't have symptoms. So when they don't have symptoms, we go to the date they were tested, and we're following CDC, DHHS guidelines, talking to Susan Hayes and her group constantly. So we go to the date they were tested, and we do that, that same window of time look back. If they're in that look-back period, they're not on campus, then there we have another positive that does not affect the school. Now, the one, none of us want, we don't want anybody to be positive, and we surely don't want a positive effect in our school. So when does a positive case with a student or a positive case with a staff member affect a school? Well, student winds up positive or staff member, they had symptoms, say their symptoms started two days ago, we look at the two days prior, were they on campus, if they were, we've got an exposure issue. Okay? Say they turned up positive, and they didn't have symptoms, we go to their test date, and we go from their test date forward, look in that look-back period, and they were on campus, now we've got a positive case affecting the school. So that's the one you hear about, board members. The positive case that affects the school, and then on your, I do report to you weekly on, on the, now I share with you the positives that didn't affect the school. And I'm gonna get into that in a minute, because Mr. Bowles asked a great question, and I'm gonna share some things with you. So what happens when we have a positive case, Mr. Bowlett, the Courier Tribune reporter, he asked me what we've had in the last week, and you see, Mr. Bowlett, you're sitting here, I send you, I said, we've had these exposure cases on these days, and I tell you the school and the date. Are there other positive cases that didn't affect the schools? Absolutely, there are. There's children who are 100% removed that we learn are positive. Well, they're positive for our school system, they just didn't affect the school. So what do we do when it affects the school? First thing to do is get the principal, and we, they go to contact, they do a look where the child's been during that window of time of exposure. I'm very proud of our principals and our school staff, because they spot everything they do when this happens. And they immediately take off to identify who it is, staff or students who've been impacted and been exposed, and then they go and call them individually. And they tell them they have to be removed from campus for 14 days, because they've been exposed to a positive case, and we go from the day we learn it, because all other dates, it could be up in the air, so the Randolph County school system counts from the day we learn it. That's safe, that's the best safety we can put in place. We don't need to be picking and choosing days back and picking the wrong one. So they call, and they get, and they get staff involved, they call, and they get staff members that are exposed off-campus. They tell them their return date, they call the parents, they tell the return date, there's no way to come back early. 14 days out, 14 calendar days. Principal calls me back when they're done with their calls, and I send them a phone message to send to their community, so the rest of the community doesn't learn about it different ways and wonder, and our phone message talks about it, if your child has been exposed, you have already been contacted. It also has a piece, because Ms. Hayes's group may find something else later and contact them, so it has a comment about that. It talks about the people exposed that have been removed for 14 days. Well, I, the principal sends that message to the community, I send a message to his or her staff. So that's our process. Now, to the Trinity High School families and to the Providence Grove High School families, I didn't do enough with the first two cases on August 24th. We dealt with who was directly affected, and that night, I realized we needed to do more. I left two principals out there, and didn't do enough to support them or their school communities or staffs. So starting with the third case on, I think, the 27th of August, Southwest Middle, we put all these pieces in place. We, I emailed the staff at Trinity and Providence Grove on the morning of the 25th, but we started the full-blown process on 27th. My principals never complained, but I left them April Thompson and Brian Toff in a tough situation. So now let's talk about the scenarios of the kids and the staff members we deal with, every day. And it's worth every moment we put into this. So when I have a child comes in, or a staff member, we do a morning check-in, or at some time during the day, they start not feeling good, they have symptoms. We have broadened the symptom list, because the CDC and DHHS and Randolph County Public Health have two, and we're following their lead. So if you have symptoms, you get sent home for 20, for 10 days. The only way you can come back any earlier is if you get a negative COVID test, 24 hours, no fever, and 24 hours, no symptoms. That's one way, all three of those components. Or you get an alternative diagnosis from your doctor, 24 hours, no fever, 25 hours, no symptoms. So it's two ways. Both ways has 24 hours, no fever, no symptoms. Another case we deal with is we get calls from time to time, and, and by the way, the parents have been awesome. The students have been awesome, the staff's been awesome, the parents have been awesome. They call us and say, hey, I just tested positive. And, and so I've got, or Ms. Hazel called, said, we've heard of an exposure. So you've been exposed to a positive, you're automatically removed from school for 14 days. We don't wait till the end of the day. We go get that child, we go get that staff member, we get them off-campus, we start counting. Doesn't mean they're positive, but they've been exposed to a positive, maybe a parent, maybe a friend, who knows what. Maybe it's, uh, what the situation is. And then about the middle of September, we had a new scenario appear, and I credit the, uh, CDC and DHHS and Ms. Hayes for realizing this was a problem that was growing. It's called the household rule. So about the middle of September, we started dealing with, Stephen Gany has symptoms. So he goes home for 10 days. Anybody else in his house and the school system's got to go home for 14 days, because they've been exposed to his symptoms. They can only come back one of two ways early. He comes back in 10 days with a symptom rule. They can come back now, the DHHS is happy. If he gets a negative COVID, or Stephen gets a alternative diagnosis, the household members can come on back early. That was a new rule. So, I'll tell you this, um, we have followed the Department of Health and Human Services closely, CDC closely, and, uh, the one thing we have done as a school system is, we get different reports. Sometimes we hear symptoms started on this day, sometimes we hear, so we decided on the beginning that we count from the time we learn of the situation. And yes, does that build in a day or two? It might. Is it built in for the sake of safety? It does. Is it fail-proof? No. Is it our best effort to keep people safe? It's our best effort. So, I'll stop there, and I'll answer any questions, and I'll get into some data, because I want to share some data that is, that applies to the Randolph County school system during the first eight and a half weeks. Mr. Burgess, you have a question for me? I think.
Yeah, I just, um, I'm making sure I understood the household rules, explain that again, if, is it when there's a student, or someone in the household tests positive or has symptoms?
Has symptoms.
Symptoms. So, then I'm in the household, and I just, and I have symptoms, but it turns out I just have strep throat or something like that, that I can come back after?
No, if you were in the household, you had symptoms, we would hope we'd know it, so we could go get anybody in our school system in your household out. They're out 14 days, you with symptoms is out, or out.
I know, I'm saying, I'm in the household, I didn't have the symptoms, I wasn't the one that first had the symptoms, I'm the one that's gonna be out 14 days.
Yes, because there's a 14-day compatriot here.
Right, but, so it doesn't matter if I test negative or anything like that, I'm still out 14 days?
Unless the person with the symptoms gets an alternative diagnosis from the doctor, which was just added last week, or gets a negative COVID result, we can bring you back. That's exactly right.
Okay.
That was a new twist, we went four weeks without the household rule in place, and then that ramped up some of our efforts, we had to, that, that broadened some more stuff, but it's, we're doing what we need to do for kids.
So, can you tell us, and, and maybe this is the number, as you said, you were gonna share, but can you tell us, and I guess, Ms. Hayes, gotta report this, that, uh, when we met, whatever the date was, the 21st, 14th, I think, the last time we were here, when we voted to, uh, send kids back next week, five days for elementary school, is that what it was in, in September? Since that time, uh, obviously, you know, we know they have increased, but can you tell us, what can you tell us as far as numbers, as far as number of cases we've had during that time? Are you able to tell us those things?
Without a doubt, the case numbers have increased, and I will share that with you. Okay? So, case numbers, I want to go back, there's case numbers, there's students, a student case, student's positive, they affect the school. So we have to remove them, because people are exposed to a positive. There's a student case where they don't affect the school. There's a staff positive that affects the school, and there's a staff positive that doesn't affect the school. So, uh, Mr. Burgess, to your question, the Board of Education made a decision on September 21 to bring back grades pre-K through five, five days a week, starting on October 19, and the, uh, the five weeks prior to that decision, the school system had, students and staff combined, 37 positive cases. Now, the week y'all made that decision, we only had a total of seven cases that week. But counting that week you made the decision, and I do my weeks, uh, Saturday to Friday, I run the week Saturday to Friday. Um, starting with the week you made that decision through today, with two days left, the school system has had 59 positive cases, turned out, so that would be one, two, three, four, five, really, four and a half weeks, we've had 59 positives. So overall, we've had 96 positives. 61.46% have occurred during the week of the decision to bring pre-K through five back, um, up till now. What is concerning to me is that counting, uh, if you look, counting this week, four of the past five weeks, counting this week, the number of cases have been double digits. Prior to the first double-digit week, no, nine was the highest.
And of those 59, since our last, the week we voted to send, uh, elementary school kids back, how many, I mean, of those 59, I'm assuming those are the ones that do affect the school?
No, that's totally.
I know, but say, how many of those did affect the school as far as quarantine, and?
Um, of the 59 that did affect the school, uh, give me a second. One, two, three. One, two, three, six. Eight student and five, eight, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 staff. During that, I'm looking at that, I'm looking at the week, let me make sure I got that right, Mr. Burgess, starting with the week you're talking about, the week of the 19th to the 25th, we had five we had five, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen staff that affected the school. And students was one, two, three, six, eight student cases.
Because Dr. Gany said... Yeah, a little less than half, right?
And did you say y'all also counted kids who get, you know, tested positive, but they're virtual, you still count them as a case?
We count anybody connected, they would be in the other column, that would be a student case not affecting the school, just like that would, they would be in that column. If they're totally virtual, that's not the number I just gave him.
Okay.
So yes, yes, sir, they're our students. Ms. Hayes calls or we learn it and, you know, we don't want anybody sick. We don't want anybody to get COVID. But if we're going to deal with a COVID, we hope we've had them off campus long enough that they don't impact other people on campus. So when I look at that, when I look at the student case that affected the school, yes, there's, in that number I gave y'all, beginning with fifty-nine, that does include student and staff members who are positive and not affect the school. Yes, sir.
But you don't, I mean, students are just totally virtual, virtual?
How many in the system?
I mean, you said you kept up with them, correct me if I'm wrong, but I asked if they're totally virtual and they, y'all find out they get it, do y'all count that? And you said, yes.
Yes, sir, and that count of fifty-nine during that window of time is...
Actually, they haven't been on campus and will maybe never be back on campus.
Yeah, we, I mean, I, I couldn't tell you exactly one right, maybe I know we have some that are a hundred percent remote. Yes, sir.
The reason my asking, I think, you know, we say if you're going to make a decision tonight, and we know these kids are virtual, one hundred percent virtual now, and they'll probably stay one hundred percent virtual. And that's the reason I want to know these numbers. I mean, if you throw all these kids who are one hundred percent virtual in there, and they might stay one hundred percent virtual, it's sort of, you know, tilts the numbers a little bit.
I think when you have a lot of, several kids that I think are planning on coming back too, that have been virtual in the younger grades, and I mean, he might can touch on that.
To give you a bigger, to give you a better read, just to, your question and your question, Mr. Boyle and Mr. Burgess, so we've had ninety-six positive cases, student and staff combined in the Randolph County school system since day one. Eighteen student cases affected the school and eighteen staff member cases affected the school. So you've got sixty of those ninety-six did not, and that doesn't mean they weren't on campus, but they may have, you know, so picture this. I'm an A-day student, I leave on Tuesday. I get symptoms on Friday and Sunday I test positive. Well, that's what's been going on, has been just, there's the unwritten story out there, the cooperation of the entire community. That's the story's not been told yet. The story about how the parent will call you and tell you, my child's not feeling well, I'm not sending him tomorrow. And that keeps other kids from being exposed and other staff members. That's one of those that when it's all over, I'll be very proud of because those are the calls we've been getting from day one. People want to, people want to talk about a lot of the other things, but there's a lot of parents and staff and students have stepped up in all of this and said, I don't feel well. We have kids that have sent in messages, their teachers, and said, I'm not feeling well, I'm not coming today. And that's kept us from having exposure on campus when we find out what's going on. We get with Ms. Hayes, we, we start working and there we go. So there's, there's a whole unwritten story about what's been going on, the cooperation in the Randolph County school system and county period. Yes, sir.
So, all right, the fifty-nine who've tested, who have positive cases since our last meeting, since that week, so twenty-four, twenty-four affected the school, looks like?
What are you talking about?
Of the fifty-nine, eight, eight students, sixteen staff, twenty-four students, I mean, twenty-four cases.
I've got one, two, three, six, eight students and the staff has been five, eight, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. So what's that, twenty-four? Yes, sir.
All right, so of the thirty-five who did not affect the schools, some of them, like Mr. Boyle was saying, some of them are virtual students and they haven't been on campus at all, and some of them were an A-day student that had symptoms on Saturday or whatever, so they hadn't been on campus in the last forty-eight hours, so therefore they didn't affect the school. And they didn't come to school Monday.
Let me, let me say this.
Yeah.
That would be the scenario. To tell you, I can look right here, Mr. Boyle, and tell you, if I remember this kid, I mean, I, I...
But that's, that's the scenario where someone who is a student, does come to school, did not affect the school, the cause of quarantine.
The way we've been looking at this, and Beverly's been helping a lot, and Wyndham's been helping me, Wyndham Ashworth, we have Amber Ward and Anne Moody with us, the way we've been looking at it is first, we don't want anybody to get it. But when we find out there's a positive, then we have to go and see what impact it's had. So if, if somebody has it, but they're a hundred percent remote, we haven't impacted anybody. But we, we're gonna, we've got to make sure that child gets well, for that staff member as well. You know, you could have, you could have a situation in this where a staff member is, is not been on campus for a while for some, for whatever reason. So that's how we approach it, Mr. Burgess.
I have...
Dr. Gany had a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Between the students and staff, what are we looking at, seventeen thousand people?
Uh, Mr. Cuthbert, I'm going to go low on our enrollment right now, fifteen thousand one hundred. And our staff is two thousand seventy-eight. Last number I pulled was full-time, part-time account combined was two thousand seventy-eight. So you're looking at fifteen thousand one hundred seventy-eight people. And that's a little, that might be a little low on the student number, Mr. Cuthbert?
Mm-hmm. But if we're looking at numbers, then of those fifty-nine cases, twenty-four affected schools, so you're looking at point, zero point three five percent positive cases affected our school system. That's well under Randolph County, which is two point three three percent.
Right now, you're, we're talking right now, those numbers, just to make sure anybody out there watching, what we're talking about this last little bit is the numbers since that week I made the decision pre-K, which it, it's ramped up. That's why, Mr. Burgess, I think, and why all of you are asking about these weeks because it has, has grown. But just to clarify, yes, sir, I, you, I would say that, that percentage is very low, Mr. Cuthbert. Yes, sir.
I do have one more question. I, I, how many, okay, has this picked up, let's just say last week, I think it was like twenty-three cases, or something you said? How many hours a day or a week? I can't imagine other school systems are just starting back, so how many hours a week are you putting into keeping us in school?
Yeah, Mr. Cuthbert, whatever it takes.
It's a lot.
But it's a lot, but it's whatever it takes because kids need to be back in school as soon as we can get them back.
I mean, some days you're spending all day, aren't you?
It, it, it has been a lot of my days and, and, but I had staff members helping me, but whatever it takes to keep, to get them in school, to keep them in school, I want to do it.
I'm telling you, whether you, you like us, it doesn't really, do you like him? He's done a lot, and Susan Hayes, these people have worked their rear end off, I'm telling you, to keep these kids in school and chasing this thing. I mean, I can't imagine, I know the time you put in, but I think people don't realize how much time you put in. And what a good job everybody's done because I'm telling you, we've come close to closing a few schools and you guys were able to, we had two schools closed for fourteen days, right, or one?
Two, two, and I was going to say this later, but both, both groups handled that like champions. The Trinity, the Trinity High School community was the first one and, and that staff and that community handled it like champions. They set the tone. We talked about that could happen and for that to happen that early, wasn't the best timing. But that community's just basically took that on us and they handled it, they, you know, we said that could possibly happen. I'm going to speak to that in a minute a little bit about how we move forward. But I just appreciate we, we had the Harley College that was just returned and Brian Toth led Trinity High School through that and Shane Rose led the Harley College, just like champions and the old staff and student body. So very, very pleased with the leadership and would expect that out of the other twenty-nine as well because of what we've got going on in these stories.
Mr. Cuthbert, you know, we're here tonight and everybody who's watching on, we're here tonight, and everybody knows why we're here. We're here to decide whether we're going to start back on night, start back later. I mean, we've got some good information tonight, but we've been here sitting here for an hour and we ain't even got to inform why we're here tonight.
That's fine, I, I just thought it was important to have the information and everybody know where we stand. If you want to, we can cut to the chase right now and we'll just ask Dr. Gany.
I mean, I mean, we've said meetings last couple of months, we chased rabbits for two or three hours and meet. I mean...
Here's the deal, do you feel safe? I mean, you, you're in it every day. I mean, what can, I know, what workload do you feel like you could handle? What do you think would work? I know you want kids back in school. I'm cutting to the chase, that's what you want, that's what you're getting. Is there a comfortable feeling out there that you would recommend as a superintendent for us to work with? Do you want to go back five days? But I mean, I don't, you've got to consider, you've got several people you need that want you to make them happy. But we can't make everybody happy. You know what? We have to take into consideration, we have teachers, we have other staff members, we have parents that I'm sure want to go back to work, need to go back to work. You know what? We have kids need to be in school, they're missing really important part of their life. What can we do safely? I mean, do we, do we stay the course in your opinion? I mean, I don't want to go fully remote, I have no desire to sit here and, we've come too far to go backwards. I have no, I don't want to go remote. And I don't think you do either. But anyway, but can you help me out? Before you, I don't want to, you want to tell us something, but the first question I think we need to ask is, as we have right now, what we voted on was to return five days for elementary school students on Monday. Currently, are we ready for seventeen elementary schools to open back up five days here in, on Monday, the nineteenth?
No, because when we decided to have a special call meeting to prevent overwork and, and things be done, we would need, we could be ready the twenty-sixth now, but we, I would, we would need a week. We were going to start some rerouting of students at the elementary levels, that was going to start Monday. And I told the principals on Monday in a Zoom conference to not do anything with rerouting until we, until, we would postpone that until Thursday. They were ready to go. Beth Davis, the Power School Group, had them ready to go and Kathy Waddell. So we did lose a week, Mr. Burgess, because I did not want to have double work, as Ms. Hayes mentioned. Last week was a very, it was spiraling and to your point, Mr. Boyle, I've noticed days that are busier than others and Ms. Hayes has given me feedback on that, that there's days when, when the results come in and she doesn't have any more control over it than anybody else. So Mondays are busy, Mondays are very busy. So I would say, Mr. Burgess, we need to delay it, give, give us a week. But there's some other couple of things I would like to say about us moving forward and us where we are, so you will know the things you will continue to see as we move forward. And another strategy that I will have to employ in second semester, I do want to speak to that a little bit.
So let me, let me get this straight. So we're saying, because of this eight point two percent over the last fourteen days, that is why we're not ready to start Monday?
No, sir. We had, we, when, when we decided to have a special call or meeting and not know where we were, what direction might come, instead of rerouting students that had been planned because of going five days a week, the principals were, were asked Monday to wait on that so there would not be double work if we did not come back five days a week.
Okay, then let me answer this question then. If, if we were not talking about this eight point two percent, would we be ready to start Monday? If this, if, if it wasn't about the COVID cases, were we going to be ready to start Monday?
No, we would not be ready to start Monday. We would have been ready to start if we had done Monday, the twelfth, what we had planned to do this, starting Monday, the twelfth, this week.
So, so when we made the board decision on nine twenty-one, a memo, a telephone message went out on nine twenty-two, we asked parents to step up, make that decision by nine twenty-five. Now eighty-three percent of our parents wanting the kids back five days a week, but now, now we're not ready. I just, I, I have a real hard time believing that we're not ready.
Well, we have not...
That we couldn't be ready.
Well, what I'm referring to is we need time to transfer things in campus as kids are going to be moved from one teacher to another based on some of the creative things schools have done. We will be rerouting some classrooms, we need to get those straight before we bring kids back. We don't need to be moving kids around when they're back in the building. So that's what was put on hold Monday, Mr. Cuthbert, until we got past this meeting to see what direction we will go in.
So I think, just, um, when you halted everything to see what we decided here, I think that took kind of the one of the weeks that they were going to finalize class rosters and these different things they were going to do, they, they had to just kind of put it on hold. And so I think that's why today's Wednesday, if we tell them tomorrow, okay, Monday, they're going to be a little bit behind because you halted everything on Monday because of the number, which were so high. If they hadn't been halted, I think they probably would have been ready. Once I've done it, please.
That is correct.
Dr. Gany, I know where you're jumping around, I apologize. And you may get to this if you are, get back on what you want to. And, and I don't know exactly where we're at as far as having just virtual teachers, especially at elementary school, because I think some of the biggest thing, and everybody goes through is the teachers are just stressed out. We all get emails, you get them, we're all stressed out. And I know you're working hard. And I guess their thing is, you know, they, sometimes we got, we got a lengthy, we all get the same emails most of the time. We got a lengthy email this afternoon, I thought I could teach it four classes. You know, and they're, they're stressed out. And I know we're keep, we're, we're continuing to find better ways to try to help them. You feel their pain. And how, how are we doing that? And I know it's kind of off topic a little bit, but as far as going back to school, the things that we're doing to try to help teachers feel like, not, because that's the reason that email I got, that they're teaching four classes, I know they're not, but what are we doing as far as virtual and complete remote teachers and things like that to kind of help them?
That is part of what some of the plans that were being made, but when you go move kids from classroom, from teacher to teacher, there was specific, you can't just pick up a child's stuff out of campus and move it to the next teacher. Otherwise, it cancels out everything they've been doing and that's why there had to be a delay because wanted to see what came out of this meeting and, and did not want, I mean, we could have had every schedule undone and then turned around back on these teachers and said, and principals to renew the schedules back to where they were on the ninth if something had changed.
That's all it is, trying to keep the stress off the teachers and trying to...
I mean, that's, that's, didn't I know the result of this, what this was going to be?
Board members, I, I think, I'd like to make a proposal, this is not a motion, this is a proposal for us to discuss as maybe to trace the point and kind of get to this. You know, listen to this and write down all these, these things you've been told. First of all, one thing you cannot dispute is that the, the numbers are definitely increasing in this, in, with our students and our staff members. If we go... If we go through the five-day plan that we currently have, the exposures are, will increase in our, in our schools. That's not a, you don't have to be a CDC scientist to figure that out. That's just math. Because if we had some that are in school and they had, they did not expose somebody, you know, they tested positive, but because they weren't there for 48 hours, it does reduce the exposure, correct? So going five days is going to increase the exposure. Parents that are listening tonight, parents that are not listening, they need to understand that the risk, their risk of exposure for their children is going to go up when we go back five days. And also, the chances of your, your school being quarantined, some portions, some classes, some staff members, some portions, the chances of that being quarantined is gonna go up on a five-day plan versus the current A B plan. That being said, you understand what I'm saying? Let's say, everybody, all right. So that being said, I do not feel that the current A B schedule, especially in the elementary schools, is what we're talking about, an elementary school is sustainable. We can be nice about things and make sure, Coach, but reality is, kids are not, remote kids, the kids that are on remote days are not learning what they need to learn. We're dumping more on teachers having to do that and all the other stuff, the campus stuff, everything that's been included. We're giving more and more to teachers. So the A B schedule that we're currently on is not sustainable for, for teachers or for students. I do not believe that. I believe that we need, we should seriously consider a four-day week with a remote, with a remote day in there. And I would suggest maybe even moving that remote days to Friday. It would give us three days in a row that we're off. You know, statistically, it could reduce the amount of exposures very mentally, but at least it would reduce a little bit from Wednesday to Friday.
Talking about that 48-hour period, is that, you keep telling, I'm sorry to interrupt you, you keep talking about a 48-hour, would, I mean, I'm thinking that would make sense. Would that make sense? Would that help if you, if you did move it to Friday? I mean, would that make a difference in playing?
It could. I mean, you could have, you could have somebody start, you could, you could have some help on someone started symptoms on Sunday and they had not been on campus since Thursday and they wound up, we could, that could help you some, yes. Or.
Statistically, it's small. I mean, it is small, but it, but A B day is working from the standpoint of it is helping us reduce the exposures. But it is not working as far as operating the school system as far as for teachers and for.
Let me jump in here. I want to jump in. I want you to keep continuing. But the A B day, what is happening? That's what I'm talking about, that elephant in the room. Our kids are failing. And they're failing, we're failing. And that's nothing, we don't keep hearing about it. But I hear the whispers from the teachers because when they're so remote, they're failing. And I agree with you, Fred. I'm agreeing with you. We gotta get back to school. And I didn't mean to interrupt, but we've got to stop, we've got to stop this. Had a parent the other day, his kid had a 17 and a 38. And you know, maybe you say, well, he's not the best student. Well, if he was in class, he'd have accountability. That teacher, that coach would hold him accountable. This kid is on up and down. He's not gonna give no details about him. He's been doing it this whole time and now he's failing. So that's, go ahead, Fred. I didn't mean to interrupt. But that's why the A B day is not working. At middle school, high school, it's not working. We're forced into it because of our governor, but it's not working. Students are failing. Go ahead, Fred. I apologize.
Well, I mean, I think it's fairly simple. Really, I think we should really, I mean, what objections do people have as far as a four days instead of five? Because we still.
Fred, the thing is though, we're trying to make a decision where 83% of our elementary school parents said they wanted five days a week. And why, why do, if we know that remote learning is not working, why do we think that one day is magically gonna be, oh, that'll be fine for them one day? I'm not, I'm not for that. Because I'll tell you why. Because we're saying the students only need to be in school 80% of the time, one day remote learning. It's not working. Remote learning is not working.
I agree, but have you thought about, you said 83% of the parents. You didn't mention any of the staff or teachers. Have you thought about them?
Absolutely. Good. Come on, give me a point.
I know that, but think about it, Todd. I believe they're tired. I mean, I mean, I get it with parents and all that. I want to make them happy kids in school.
Do you not think they don't understand the, the risk involved with COVID?
I understand. I don't know. I mean, worth this argument now.
And, and two, we're trying to get the kids back five days a week. So the elementary principals have already made plans with all of their staff. These teachers are gonna be remote teachers. These teachers are gonna be in class.
Not in every school, not in every school yet. Because the numbers, the numbers don't work to do that in every school.
Some of the remote people are doing like a combination. They still don't have.
I understand, but if you've got.
What I'm saying is that they, they need to be back those five days so that most of the teachers, most of these elementary teachers are gonna be teaching either face-to-face, they're done with remote, they know how to handle five days a week with kids. It's what their job was. And then the remote teachers can totally focus on the kids remotely. If you do four days, you're still making teachers do double the work one day a week. I mean, they're gonna do four days in class and one day virtual.
No, no. If I've got, if all my students are remote one day, I'm not doing double the work because I'm not teaching kids in person that day and teaching remotely.
But you're gonna write, you're gonna have to write all your plans on those days to do it remotely instead of face-to-face.
So wait, you don't write plans on the days that they're in front of you? You still gotta write plans, right? You're not increasing the work.
But you teach differently if they're remotely than.
All right. So Todd asked a question, but I'll answer Todd's question. Todd said, why the difference in four versus five? The first thing I said was the numbers are increasing and that the number of exposures, the risk to exposure will increase if we go five days. It's gonna increase if we go four days for what we're currently doing. So whenever, we've already had to quarantine how many of our schools, how many of our students, rather, in the, in the last three weeks. So when we're going five days and we're quarantining somebody, they haven't been learning remote, they had, at least if they're, if they're going Friday remote, then there is a little bit of a, there's a little bit of, whatever you wanna call it, at least a normalcy that, okay, they're used to doing something remote. They still have, the ones that have laptops, have Chromebooks, they still have. So when you do five days, you're gonna bring the laptops back? And all of a sudden, you, the next day, you get a thing, said, okay, everybody's remote, everybody's, or not everybody, these students are quarantined. How are you gonna give them the Chromebooks?
We talked about that last morning. Maybe they wouldn't bring them in.
Yeah, we're not bringing Chromebooks back. We talked about that last.
Let me, let me interrupt you just one second. Do you think, and this is just me, and this may be wrong. If it is, I apologize. I'm gonna ask the superintendent the question. And if, I mean, this to me, you know, we all agree we want kids back in school. 110%, we want kids in school, whether it's four days or five days. You know what? I'll live with it. I'm gonna ask the superintendent point-blank question if I may. Do you, I know you're chasing these cases. I know your staff, I know they're tired. Would you be, and I almost feel like I need the comfort level of him because you know what? He's doing a lot of the work. I sometimes don't feel fair in making this decision. I'm sitting here as a board member. You know what? He's doing the work. He's head of this school system. You know, he was the one that got out in front and basically, hey, we're gonna start the school A B. And you know what? We were the first system. So I credit you with that. Yes, we agreed with it. But we, we probably would have agreed to start back remotely if that had been your choice. I'm gonna ask you, do you have an opinion on this comparing five or four? Or what do you think feel comfortable with? And that's if you don't mind.
Here's what I'll say to you. I'm gonna keep being transparent to anybody asking. You ask me if we had exposure at a school, I'm gonna tell you we had exposure. If you ask me how many I've had, Mr. Bullock, since last week, I'm gonna send you the same quote with a different data, okay? I'm gonna be transparent. If we go back five days a week, I think Mr. Burgess is correct. We got a chance for more exposures. And my staff will continue to full-court press it. And we'll continue to move kids out if we need to, or staff out if we need to. There probably will be an increase. And if we can all live with that, that's fine. Because we're gonna do what it takes to keep kids safe. And Ms. Hayes and I will tell you that we've moved kids out and we've not heard of big outbreaks of roof. We've moved out. I'm not telling you we're perfect. I am telling you that I feel like maybe we've gotten ahead of some things. I will tell you in the second quarter, our staff is tired. Our teachers are tired. I told a teacher who called me the other week who was not real happy about something I talked about with Zoom. I said, well, you haven't been on one of the staffs yet. They had to cover classes for 14 days during your plan because you hadn't had one of those cases yet. Whatever the board decides, my staff and I will get behind, wholeheartedly. And if it winds up being 13 exposures at a school one week, or 13 schools, or I'm gonna report it when asked. We're gonna continue to contact, phrase this as absolutely hard as we can because I want kids back in school. And we might be using a different strategy than has been used up to this point. We've used it twice. It may be used more during the second quarter as far as maybe quarantining a whole grade level or a whole school because staff's getting tired. So Form 1, five days, I hear, I hear both sides of the argument. I can hear it. I'd like to do more than two days. I absolutely would. And yes, board members, I didn't feel good Friday night. I didn't feel good Saturday night. I didn't feel good Sunday night. And I didn't feel good Monday night because cases have been rising. Whenever they come in, that's out of my control and it's out of the health department's control. But if we're, we're on the same page, I'm good. We'll continue to move forward. I would like to see the kids in more than two days a week. I would like to see that. And I think it's unfortunate that we've hit a second wave right here on the heels or the, right on the front end of going back. We had a good plan. And if I acted in error as superintendent by putting a hold on that on Monday, that's my own now. But I also didn't want us to have a decision not to start on the 19th and have to undo all the schedules that, that were ready to be put in the computer starting Monday. Because Beth Davis talked to me about the different facets of that. So, Mr. Chicker, 4-1, 5, we'll be ready to go. We're gonna, we're gonna do whatever it takes.
I understand that, and I think you will. But I do believe the superintendent that I talked to Saturday night, maybe Friday night, Sunday night, was an exhausted man. He almost made me feel like, you know, he had fought so hard to win the battle that with the numbers increasing, I think he thought he might be losing about. And, and he may not tell you that, but I can read that. He was down. And he was a lot more upbeat when, I think this week, especially one day, I think he got by with just one case. But I could tell a little difference in it. You know what? I want kids back in school. I guess the argument is that five or four.
Wait, before.
I just want to tell you, I think in all fairness, and I'm, and I'm just, this is my opinion. And it seems like it's going five. And some's gonna be for four and one day off. I mean, he did say staff are tired, teachers are tired. I'm not about if we went four, I'm not saying you gotta leave it at four. I'm just saying you might could see how it goes and catch a breath. I'm just thinking, you know, you could look at it a month, two months. I mean, I mean, but when you say five, you can't, it's harder to, I don't want to go back. I don't want to go back to three because of cases, bro. I'd rather say four and go to five. Hey, we're got this thing. Dr. Gannon, teachers arrested, but you guys, you can do what you want.
Well, Sharon said that we have, you know, we got these teachers who are gonna teach some remote, some teachers are gonna teach just remote. And that's, that's very true of many schools, but not all of them because the, the math does not work. If only, you know, there's, there's classes out there, schools out there that the math, as far as we gotta keep certain number of kids in, you know, the K, is it K2, K3, whatever it is.
K3.
K3. Well, we can't have, we don't have enough remote, or we got too many remote to make one classroom. So therefore, you are gonna have teachers teaching remote and in-person five days a week.
Are they more or less, are they more with the standards than.
No, no. So, Mr. Burgess, to your point, I'm looking at the plans for the 17 elementary schools. And I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, that have designated that position. And actually, it's 18 because they got random middles, fifth grade involved. Looks like on a rough count, that's how many designated that position that I gave them the other week because of the four or five class size to be remote. And I can tell you, I talked to several principals, and what you're saying is exactly right. There's some, like I was talking to a principal the other week, and she had five in this class, this grade, seven in this grade, and there wasn't enough to pull because you can't, you gotta get enough for your position. You can't just have a class of 12 when you got the class size rule in place. So.
That's why it's, it's just, it's not that the principals haven't made the roster right away, it's that the math has worked.
Remember, they were given the option of hiring 100% teacher or taking that position and two 50% teachers, or 200% TAs, or a 50% teacher and 100% TA. So they were given multiple options to use to help address four or five class size because that's what I was hearing after the September 21 decision was, and as we all know, I've been one of the biggest opponents of the K3 class size rule because I had said years ago, grades 412 would suffer from it because of class size. And here we are yet again with a decision made five years ago. We're in the middle of a pandemic. And we would love for four or five not to have been pushed to the level it's been pushed.
But with all these options, the use, you know, as TAs or part-time teacher, full-time teacher, how many good positions being filled? My mind's saying, I know they all have in those trials.
Right now, I have two of them. Actually, I didn't look on the backside. That one, there's two more remotes right there, three more remotes, four more. I'm sorry. I miscounted. I thought this front sheet. I wasn't looking at school names. So there was, I'm looking at four more remote teachers in the plans. I have right now, as of this morning, I have two of them have been filled.
Dr. Gannon, you help me understand something. So right now, the way we're doing elementary schools, so on Monday and Tuesday, they got eight days. If a teacher is teaching those students that are in class. If a teacher is teaching those students that are in class on those days, are they stopping and going, and going and then teaching a remote class differently? Or is what they're teaching, teaching the kids that are live there supposed to be the same as what's going to the remote students?
Well, you've got some variations, Mr. Culler, but if you go to Ram's Elementary and you walk in there, you'll see just about every teacher. The kid's either sitting in the class at the same, at the class time, or, or you see the kid remote same class time. You, you have some recorded lessons during the class time, you have a lot of Google Meet classes. There's variations across the system, Mr. Culler, there is. Is it exactly the same every place? No, sir, it's not.
But are they stopping teaching live kids to do remote, or vice versa?
Excuse me?
Are they stopping teaching kids that are in classrooms to teach remote kids, or vice versa?
I wouldn't say that, I don't, I don't know an example of that, where you may need the child sitting there, and instead of instructing the kid that's sitting in class, they're teaching the other kids remotely? Yeah, I would, I would, there's, there's.
Because I thought when we started this, the A, B day, what my understanding was, when the teacher was teaching the live students there in the classroom, the remote students would be learning during the same time.
And I would hope that's happening a lot.
The, the problem is, it's not taught the same way at every grade level. You know, you might can do that in high school easier than you can in elementary school. You, you can't sit there in elementary, Sharon, you know this, I mean, it is much more hands-on. So I'm, if I'm teaching there in elementary, and I'm teaching the eight kids there in front of me, and I've got another eight to 10 kids on, that are watching it being played. First of all, what are they, they're not watching me this close, they're watching me just like they're watching us on this, their video here, watching you from a distance. They're not watching right up to you, and if they are, they can't see, then the teacher can't walk over to the student who is in the classroom to help them. You, you don't do that in high school, but you have to do that in elementary school. You're not, we can't apply the same rules from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade under this pandemic. It, it, everything's being taught differently. And.
Nobody's saying that, Fred, I mean, I'm talking strictly about elementary schools. This is what we talked about when going to A to B, A to B plan. I mean, we're not talking about middle or high.
When I've been in classrooms at elementary schools, Mr. Culler, I've caught myself realizing that what you're saying is going on. That a lot of that's going on at the same time. So I'm being careful not to interrupt the class, because you know, I'll, I'll walk in a room, and I'm so used to seeing the kids that are there. And all of a sudden, I realize there's kids live. So I would, I would guess there's more of that going on at the elementary level than the, the live and the live, the in-person and the live.
And these students also, right?
Well, a, a lot of the.
They're running the same time as those in, doing it live, if they're remote.
What was that, Fred?
Well, they can't always do that, because a lot of these kids are with a grandparent, a lot of these kids are in a daycare. So if the teacher is doing it live, they can't log on. They, they're not in, they're not in their home with their parents sitting in front of computer. So they miss out on that.
I, I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just, I don't understand where we're, how, when we started this, they were being taught live, and at the same time, the remote student is supposed to be also learning at the same time. And I guess it's not that way.
I think they are in some cases, I just, I don't think it's.
I think what is, what makes it different from some, one class to another is they are, there are recorded lessons being used. I would say that's probably happening more in the middle on the high school level, but I know a lot of middle school kids and high school kids are tied in on Google Meets when they're not there. So I don't, I, I don't, you know.
What about the elementary schools?
That's what I was saying, I think it's more prevalent at the elementary schools than it is at high. But also left a lot of flexibility to teachers, too.
I do think what you're talking about, Todd, would be beneficial if we were all on that same page, like if it was live, don't you, I mean? I mean, I mean, I'm thinking, and maybe some teachers, I don't know if you want to be opinionated, but I wish sometimes we had, and I've heard a lot of parents speak to this, sure would, just what you said, I wish I had, I could, they could be live, you know, like they were in the class.
But we bought a thousand.
Far away, are we there?
I think some are.
Yeah, but not enough.
Some are, but not all of them are.
We just bought a thousand thirty document cameras to increase the ability to do that, in addition to the document camera on their Chromebooks. And they've been distributed throughout the system. They just came in, we ordered those back in the summer. So that is the, that is the plan that was put in place. But, you know, we have, obviously, from one class to another, there may be some differences, there may be some variations, there may be some. We've had teachers on remote because of quarantine. So I would hope that as much live streaming that can be done is being done. But, you know, two months ago, we dealt with the complaint that some teachers didn't want to be on the cam all the time. I remember that very clearly, in the August board meeting, I think it was, where the complaint was shared that teachers didn't want to be on the cam all the time. Well, that flies in the face of what you're asking, Mr. Culler, which is, you know, when this all started, when this, when this all started, if I want to make it as simple as possible as a teacher, I'm bringing, I think you heard me say many, many times, orient them to the bell schedule. Bringing them back to in-class, the regular school day. I heard all the spring about teachers teaching all hours of the night. Now, you know, that's, have there been, have there been variations of that? I'm sure there have been.
And Dr. Gannon, you said, or you said, when you quarantine a staff member. So we have staff members quarantined now under the current schedule. We've had, so maybe I'm teaching, I'm quarantining, and maybe my B-day kids are quarantining with a current schedule. So now on an A day, I may still, now I may be teaching remotely from home. But someone still has to be in that classroom with those A-day students. So obviously, we've got, and again, it's just one sentence, now we got, staff members having covered classes, which we can't, am I wrong, we can't put a sub in that room?
No, we're using subs, but, but.
We're using subs when, when a teacher's quarantining, but they're still teaching remote?
We've used some subs there, yes, sir. And we've used staff, the day, principals have come up with plans using teacher assistants, different people to monitor the room while the teacher. What, what we've done is the teacher's been in teacher mode unless he or she was too unable to do it, because maybe they're sick, and we've got another issue.
So, which again, and it's just, I'm telling you, the elementary school kids, teachers need that day, that remote, that. In that situation, all right, I'm covering someone who's out, you know, I'm covering Sharon's class because she's having quarantine at home, teaching remote. Well, that means I'm not doing what I need to be doing. Doesn't matter if I'm an assistant, doesn't matter if I'm the PE teacher, doesn't matter if I'm another classroom, having to go back and forth. That it pulls time away, now I don't have as much time to do everything else, and I got to go home, and I got to make a video to upload through Canvas, and then try to get a seven-year-old, try to figure out how to use Canvas to receive a video. We're, I'm telling you, if we don't have a remote day, or elementary school teachers, we're going to have them leaving in droves.
I just want to be clear that if we have a busy day that's remote, it's an instructional day. We're required to have five instructional.
I understand that, it is not a work day, it is an instruction day, but you ask the elementary school teachers if that remote day that they have right now is vital to their sanity. And I, I dare say, very few of them, maybe eighty-three percent of them, I know that.
I mean, we talked about it last board meeting, you know, the five days wouldn't be as hard on the K3 as it will be the four or five. I mean, like I say, four or five grade levels, up to forty kids in the class. And you got twenty of them there, twenty of them not, then you have the person teach twenty. And like Mr. Culler said, yeah, the real world, I was thinking like you, twenty kids not there, sitting, watching the same teacher teach the ones who were there. I don't think that's happening. It might be in some places, but it ain't happening everywhere.
Elizabeth, when you say, when you say the, if we have a remote day, okay. So you're saying the teacher can't send homework sheets for that child to do on that Friday?
No, it needs to be an instructional day.
So she needs to be on Canvas, whatever.
They're instructed to send it back at home now, works a little bit.
Does she need to be in contact with every one of her students, if she has fifteen, twenty students? She has to hear from every one of those students that day?
In order for those students to count as attending.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the student to check in.
She's saying the workload, but I was going to ask Fred and everyone, I just, we're, we're, we all want everybody back in school. And we want the teachers stay sane. We all want that, and we're all figuring out, Sharon's coming at it from the teacher's standpoint, Fred's watching the teacher, we got, we got perspective that wants to stay sane. Are we talking about the four days, and we're going to revisit the fifth day in January? Or we talking about four days, and that's going to be for the rest of this year to the foreseeable future? And that's how we're playing our role, because what's going to happen is, is Lord, when we get a new governor, take it however you want, when the high school, middle school opens up, they're going to want to go four days, they're not going to go five days.
I don't care if you revisit it, four weeks if it's better.
But I mean, you, you know, we have to, we have to be saying we're going to revisit it, because if you don't, you're not going to send elementary school four days and send high school five days, right?
Right, I hope we can bring high school, middle school, five days.
I mean, but I, I, I feel like, I feel like if we got, we got to make sure, I just want to know if we're talking about indefinitely.
More than definitely indefinitely, that's what we.
Well, I know that, so. But I, I think it put people more at ease, you know, there's more.
Honestly, I would be willing if, I, I do agree with Fred.
Or agree with. Well, everybody is on the right side.
I agree with the fact that if you did it four days, and the remote on Friday, you know what? It's been stressful, he said staff's tired. You know what, you have to consider staff, too, and I, the parents, I get it. But now Friday may be easier for parents, because of, you know, a lot of people, Wednesday, I get it, Wednesday's tough on parents. You know, you're in the middle of the week, but. Well, not all of them, some of them do, but anyway.
Dr. Gannon, quick. Sorry if I got asked.
Go ahead, Todd.
Okay. Speaking just about elementary schools, if, if, if we go to five A, I'm sorry. If, if we go five days, why would you need somebody to cover someone else?
I'm not following that question, cover who?
I'm just, I mean, Fred was saying something about you have to have somebody cover another person.
So you got an example, here's an example. We had to quarantine a group of, if we have to quarantine a group of teachers, say you had to quarantine a group of teachers, you've got to have somebody, without trying, without getting too tight on the situation, you'd have to have somebody in the classroom with the kids, what we're efforts. Like, say, say, and just, you know, it happens in, in, right now, so right, if you go five days a week, could you have, I guess I see what you're saying is if you go five days a week, if something happens with one child, that whole class is probably quarantined, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking from the standpoint of, okay, if we have to quarantine a teacher or a group of teachers, will we not replace them with subs?
We have done some of that, yes.
But not in every situation, we do not, we're not putting subs in classrooms right now for every time there's a teacher being quarantined.
So, so we're, so we're not, we're not providing subs for teachers that are quarantined?
Not every situation, now, one, we can't find subs, a lot, some, we've also been covered with TAs, I mean, subs and, and different staff. They've been making, staffs have been making plans. Principals have made plans for teachers to quarantine, I don't, I mean, we could, you need to understand this. One of the things I was worried about at the beginning of the year was not only transportation money and child nutrition money, I was also worried about the cost of subs. Subs is a, is a minor item we get, but every year, we wind up using more than we, we're given, and we, we wind up using in the local money there, too. So, you know, we can commit to, I mean, last couple of things I've dealt with, I've sent them to HR and Todd to see what they could do with subs, but I mean, one school right now, I know they covered up, at the grade level, the TAs have covered, as the teachers have been teaching in remote.
One of the schools we, one of the schools that we completely shut down is because we didn't have enough people to cover classes.
Yeah.
I, 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 I miss, I don't understand the teaching remote part. Because if we're teaching live kids, aren't we recording that and then maybe posting it later?
Well, when you teach, that's, you can record the lesson and post it, archive it, so that's one of the things that's happening now that didn't happen prior to all of this. Is a child could have access to a lesson as many times over as he or she wanted if their lesson was recorded. When we're talking about remote teachers, because they've been quarantined, what we've done, we've put them on remote work, tried, quite frankly, to try to protect their leave. Because I don't want their leave touched, there are leave options, but when the state wasn't talking about whether there was going to be leave options, I started with doing remote work right then, because I, I was fearful that eventually the state would come up with a leave, and then announce and say from here forward, it counts, and from here back, it doesn't. And I didn't want our staff members' leave impacted. So we've been doing a lot of that, now if somebody gets quarantined and they're too sick to work, then we try to work through the, through the FR, the FMLA's options, if it applies, through HR.
But, but, okay, how many, how, but if a teacher's sick, I mean, we had to provide a sub, I don't, I don't see why it's, it's different.
Because she's still teaching when she's remote.
So, you guys, one of the reasons that you're going to have to end up closing some classrooms for a 2B period may just be that the teacher has to quarantine. And you're just going to have to realize that that's going to happen from time to time, no matter what plan you take. So you're going to have to close classrooms, grade levels, schools, just, even if just the staff member is quarantining and go into remote. That's just going to happen, and sometimes it's over.
I, I, this is part about covering classes, I left being a high school principal in '09. And even before any kind of pandemic came along, there were always days as a high school, middle school principal, where there wasn't a sub available, and teachers covered classes. So I'm not really sure this is that new of a phenomenon. What we've got is we've had some classes, we've had teachers quarantined, and to keep school going versus, versus quarantining an old grade level of students, or maybe quarantining an old school, we've used existing staff and principals have come up with plans. I know one school right now, that a grade level, the class is being covered by TAs, as the teacher, who's, teachers who are quarantined are teaching from remote, from, from remote. And so the kids are getting their instruction as, as they were, just the teacher's not there. I mean, it may not be exactly as it would if the teacher's in that classroom, but it's, it's better than a packet. And it's better than, you know, that's, that's, that's just a phenomenon that's gone on in schools for a long time, people having to cover, or cover classes. So I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, we'll, we'll continue to try to get subs, we're continuing to try to manage that budget the best we can. But this was one of the things that I thought would be an issue, would be transportation, child nutrition, and I thought substitute costs would be a lot. And I've referenced that in, in some presentations I made prior to the school year starting. Maybe, maybe it was at a robbery club, and maybe not here, but I did, I know that's been a concern of mine all along. Maybe, maybe it was at a robbery club, and maybe not here, but I did, I know that's been a concern of mine all along.
Um, still, it's still one more thing, I'm gonna trace it, that'd kill me, but, um, um, this, in elementary schools, I'm going back to that again, because that's really what we're talking about tonight. Um, when a teacher is teaching live students, is she recording what she is teaching to those students at that time?
And sir, I don't know that.
Not all.
I don't know that, it could be live at that time, a lot of teachers are recording lessons which are archived, that kids can go back to later. There are some pre-recorded lessons, there are cases where kids go onto Canvas, and their lesson has been pre-recorded, and it's loaded up. Now, whether that's happening in elementary school or not, I know it's happening in some in middle and high, that that day's lesson may be a pre-recorded lesson, and I know that's happened from the beginning. Uh, so you may have pre-recorded lessons that are loaded into, uh, Canvas for kids to access. I would say, if I had to think about what I've seen in the elementary schools so far, I would say there's less of that in elementary than there are in the other levels, but, um, it.
All I'm saying is, I'm saying, guys, we're just talking about elementary school. Give the elementary school teachers one day for remote instruction, one day where the, the school can be cleaned even more, one day to where I, I'm not having to deal with remote and in-person, uh, classes. The, the elementary school classroom is not taught the same way as other grades, and, no, first of all, you're not, you're not gonna have a sixth grade, a six-year-old, seven-year-old, eight-year-old, sitting in front of a computer for six hours, watching the, the teacher teach. So, I mean, it's hard enough, you, you're not gonna get a seventeen-year-old, eleventh grader to do it, you're certainly not gonna get a six-year-old, first grader to do it. So it doesn't, I mean, to a point, it doesn't matter if they're, and they're, and they're live streaming at the same time. It's not a lecture class, it, it, it can't be done that way in all situations where the kids are learning, uh, that learn differently in, in elementary school. That's all I'm saying is, that give the elementary school teachers one day for remote. It will also keep the kids in practice for having to do things remotely, because, as Elizabeth said earlier, and we also said this, when we go back five days, or four days, we are gonna increase our risk to exposure. We're gonna have more quarantines, there's gonna be, ironically, probably gonna be more remote learning.
I just don't see how, and I, and this is just me, I don't see how you can sit here and deny it, honestly, and, and we know the cases is going up, yes, I know it's smaller in this school, but we also know it's putting a heavier load on our superintendent and the staff. Why not, you know what, everybody wants to go more than two days, why not give four days a try, Friday remote, and then let people catch their breath a little bit, we ease back in. If it's a month from now, if it's November, whatever, you know what, if things are moving smooth, and Dr. Gane says, you know what, I think we can handle five days, I'm ready for it. I mean, I'd much rather do that than November the fifteenth. We have twenty teachers decide, I'm gonna retire early, I can't do this anymore. And, um, you know, we gotta go backwards, or, or you know what, the case is, hey, it's out of control, we've closed four elementary schools, trying to hang in there five days a week, you know? And you gotta backpedal, I mean, we've worked a long ways to get where we are, and I'm proud of that, and, um, I really, you know what, hey, a win's a win, I mean, if you're going four days, hey, Guilford County, by my understanding, I don't think they went, they went to school at all, are they still at home? Hey, we've been at school for what, two months?
Yeah, we got to say.
Four days, I mean, come on, Ashville City's just now starting back. We stepped out, we took the chance, and we made it, and we made it work. Hey, we had a traditional graduation throughout this county, we took the chance.
I mean.
Why don't we ease into it and not blow it?
There's been three things I've heard from yesterday until a few minutes ago. Parents want their kids back on school. Fourth and fifth grade teachers, they're getting underway. Some teacher parents want their kids back five days a week. And you know, like I said, everybody will be happy, everybody sitting here will be happy. But now it's time to make a decision. If Dr. Gane hadn't jumped the gun about next Monday, so be it, he's done it, it's done, can't be re, can't go back and redo it. So we, we're gonna decide now, or be here two hours, I won't be here two more hours. We gonna move it back a week, we gonna stay five days a week, or we going four days a week? That's what's gotta be decided. And y'all gotta think, once we decide this, next couple of weeks, we gotta decide what we gonna do with middle and high school.
When I took on the release, is that the key? We don't be, we don't make decisions.
Well, that, well, that gives us three weeks.
Okay.
I mean, you know.
So deal with what's in front of us now. But, Mr. Chair, I, I move that, effective October twenty-sixth, we open elementary schools for all students who have not chosen to stay one hundred percent remote for four days, Monday through Thursday, and leave Friday as a remote instruction-only day.
Mr. Burgess has made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, would you state your name and say aye?
Trace Bowles, aye. Brian Biggs, no.
Uh, Doc Culler, absolutely no.
All right, Gary Cook, aye.
Sheriff Farlow, no.
Okay, we have a three to three tie, what happens, Elizabeth?
Uh, the motion failed.
Okay, so what do we do? Stay with yours twenty-sixth, we have to move it back.
Oh, I'm not, I'm for the twenty-sixth, but what do we do, do we go back to the original? I mean, how do you decide here, we, uh, do you go back five days, since that was the original, and you do the twenty-sixth? Or what actually happens now?
Yeah, so the, the.
I hate we have, uh, we have a tie, I hate someone's out tonight, because types like this, you need, you. I don't understand it, guys, I'm gonna be honest with you, but, uh, so what happens, Elizabeth?
The prior plan stays, so the position that you all passed last board meeting of going five days a week is, continues to be the directive to the school system.
So it would be, would it move to the, the nineteenth, like it's fair?
Make a motion to adjourn to the, like, my, my, my.
You had the option to give the superintendent the authority to delay, um, or just give them additional authority to address these issues, um, or you can simply move the start date to the twenty-sixth?
I'll make the motion that we move to start school October twenty-sixth, to give the teachers time, staff time to prepare.
You're going to have to put more in the motion than that?
I'm not voting for that either, I have something to it.
Oh, yeah, you have to, I assume you're, you're, you have the current plan, five days a week, is what you're saying?
Current plan, that is currently set up for October nineteenth of start date for five days a week, and make a motion to move that to October twenty-sixth, to five days a week. Does that suffice?
Excellent.
My second.
All those in favor, say aye, state your name.
Aye, Doc Culler.
Aye, Brian Biggs. You know, we gotta move forward.
I mean, I mean, Derek shot her down, aye, Trace Bowles.
Yeah, we shot the four days.
I mean, are you doing?
Let's vote it down, you know what, and, and, and I'm sorry, if you guys have a heavy, I hope it works. I truly hope it works. I don't understand it, I'm, I'm actually a little disappointed, but I'm gonna say aye.
Sheriff Farlow, aye.
Fred Burgess, no, because it does not matter.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I just wanna say, our fourth and fifth grade teachers, we better get them all support they gonna need.
That, that's, before we adjourn, before we adjourn, there's one thing, you know, Dr. Gane, thank you, or Todd, uh, whoever, or wherever we found the money, or whatever, to hire the fourth year, uh, extra position, that, thank you very much, but, uh, how many, how many positions we have still available?
Right now, I saw that two have been filled.
Seventeen, eighteen?
It's eighteen.
We have eighteen?
Seventeen elementary, and one went to, uh, fifth grade, uh, random middle.
Right. So, I mean.
Now, where they are, and they're recruiting, where they are, and they're planning, you know, it may be closer than, um, that's why the options were offered, they could get them to work in small groups if they chose to, to hire TAs, uh.
I'm saying you could hire a fully remotes teacher, you gave the option, every school.
That's, that's not what I, that's not what I said. I gave them a teacher position, and they could come up with what their options were, whether they wanted to add it to a in-person, they may have enough to make a hundred percent remote teacher, not a hundred percent teacher teaching away, but they have all the remote kids. Like, I know one school could, was gonna make a combo, I do believe, because the remote kids they had at each, two grade levels, they could grab all those and get them out of the, uh, off the mode of the teacher, face-to-face. But, Mr. Biggs, the equivalent of the value of a teacher position is two hundred percent TAs, so what I encourage them, because of what Mr. Burgess is, is referring to, is the ability of teachers, I encourage them to look, maybe they find the hundred percent teacher, or maybe they find two, two half-time teachers to pair up, or they could go in and take, find two TAs a hundred percent, which is the same amount of money, um, essentially, so that's, uh, I wanted to make sure they had that creativity, that actually could do a part-time teacher and a hundred percent TA, they could do that. That's the same kind of money, so, uh, that's where, that's where that was, Mr. Burgess. But I, uh, Ms. Waddell and, uh, Dr. Graves worked through their proposals the last couple of weeks with them, once we gave them the position the other week.
Which, obviously, you know, we haven't had, filled those positions, it's not because the principals had to bring it up there, it's not like the, it's not up there, you know, to hire those positions, it's because there's not enough people to fill. Unfortunately, they cannot, and maybe we'll find it this week, and, but, doing this, you know, what we've done again, is we've, because not every class, not every school's gonna have remotes for all five, sixth grade levels there in elementary school, we have now taken elementary school teachers who are teaching both remote and in-person four days a week, that's what they're doing now. Now we're saying you're gonna do it five days a week.
We just screwing it, teachers as well.
Yeah, and we do it, we do, now you're doing it four days a week, and you still have your remote, one day, that you might can take a breath somewhere to get a lesson planned together. Now we're saying, hey, you wanna do it five days a week, and, hey, find your own time to do a lesson plan, find your own time to put together a video that needs to be posted on Canvas, find your own time to, to, uh, get the MTS, that, oh, that is just, I just don't understand, I cannot believe that, I just cannot believe that we're, we're, I'm sorry, I can't believe they're screwing these, uh, these, uh, elementary school teachers over like this, for, for nine weeks for doing this.
So, Mr. Burgess, um, just in counting this, I, I asked for this this morning, I count out of, uh, there are seventeen elementary schools plus random middle, so it looks like, the way the numbers fail at every school, um, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ooh, maybe eleven, I miss counting. So it looks like eleven out of the, um, eighteen, they have posted, or they're planning to create a remote teacher position, if I'm reading this right, um, and I may have counted wrong a little bit, may have missed one or two, looks like there's, um, four schools that are gonna use, five, six schools, seven schools that are gonna use, um, their position to, um, for teacher assistance, for ex, for support, small groups is what I would guess, they're gonna do with a teacher assistant to be able to get them in small groups, so, uh, maybe the numbers played out better at some schools, uh, and actually, the school I referenced earlier, uh, I live right here, and this one, this, this school's creating a remote teacher, um, so, yeah, the issue will be whether they can find somebody or not.
It's one, it's one job to create it, you know, it's another thing to fill.
Fill.
And, uh, we're not filling it, so, uh, I, I apologize, you know, central office staff, for finding a way to, um, to find the funds to, to create it. If anybody's out there still listening, needs a job, that has a teaching certificate, have a lot of clients.
I mean, you know, we, we, we sat in here years past, talking about how much, how much work our teachers had, how much they had to do. Just had a little more.
I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Brian Biggs, aye.
Trace Bowles, aye.
Gary Cook, aye.
Sheriff Farlow, aye.
Fred, aye.